Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us today at Griswold School. We apologize for our late start. We had a meeting just prior to this and it ran a little bit later than we anticipated. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Flags in the back of my room. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is safe. Our nation under God. In the visible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get right into our agenda today. We have a presentation from the students at Griswold School. We're pretty excited about this, so, David?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Griswold School. We're very excited to host tonight's Board of Education meeting. It's not often that we get an opportunity to showcase some of the wonderful things that are happening at school. And I'm very excited today to have Mrs. Larson's class present to you all and to our Board of Education members, a project that they dove into this fall. A little background first, though. Over the summer, our administrative team, we read a text called "Deep Learning: Engage the World, Change the World." And this text discussed how we make learning meaningful for students, how we encourage people to dive deep into a project to create those lasting learning memories for students. In addition, at our first staff meeting, we discussed with the staff members how we can look for these opportunities to dive deeper and how we can not be afraid to take time out of our curriculum to participate in these projects, especially when we know that it's going to support the students. Finally, one of our Berlin learner outcomes is to support kind and compassionate citizens. And with all of that information, Mrs. Larson came to me and she said, "Dave, I think we have a great idea to support our Berlin learner outcomes and something that's going to support those kind and compassionate students." And I said to Mrs. Larson, "Run with it. Let's see what the kids can do." And we're very happy tonight to showcase that for you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kitzman. Good evening. My name is Sarah Larson. I am a grade four teacher here at Griswold. I am so proud to have the opportunity to highlight my amazing students and the impact they've already made on our school this year. Start With Hello Week is an initiative sponsored by Sandy Hook Promise. The goal of the program is to bring awareness to feelings of social isolation and how these, when left unnoticed, can have unfortunate consequences on students. Start With Hello enables students to make a difference with their peers in simple, fun, and impactful ways by encouraging them to take small but powerful actions to promote encouraging inclusion and connectedness and to identify and help others who are suffering or feeling signs of social isolation. Social isolation is the overwhelming feeling of being left out or lonely or treated like you are invisible. Young people who feel this way may pull away from society, struggle with learning and social skill development. When I brought this idea to my students, they did not hesitate to jump right in with ideas and suggestions about what they would do to make our school a place where everyone would feel welcomed and noticed. Their ideas were sincere and thoughtfully planned. Their enthusiasm was contagious and they led as a charge of an army of kindness. Tonight, we have prepared a brief presentation highlighting the message of the week and the activities that we have planned and participated in. I am pleased to turn the show over to my change agents and let them show you we have all had the honor of being part of this year.
It's such a simple word. It's also the easiest way to make someone feel noticed. During the last week of September, we created a closer, more connected, and inclusive classroom, school, and community simply by starting with hello. We asked students to think about a time they felt lonely, invisible, excluded, isolated, ignored, passed over. All of us at some point have experienced this and probably did not like how it made you feel. Now imagine living like that every day over many days and weeks. In every school, there are kids who feel alone and quietly suffer through each day. We decided this needed to change.
You can maybe learn to do the right thing and then, once they learn that, as they grow up, they can share the experience with a lot of other people and then the experience is probably going to be shared, like throughout the entire world.
People that are alone, they're not going to say, they're going to say, they're going to be lonely. So, we need people that are nice and now go and help the people that are lonely.
We went to our peers and teachers to help us make a change. We found ways to help others feel included in our school. And the good news is, this is so simple to do. Just start with hello. So that is just what we did.
In just three easy steps, anyone can help. Pay attention. Look to see if someone is alone. Look around. It can be anywhere, like the bus, lunchroom, recess, or classroom. Reach out and help.
We asked students to sit with someone who may be alone. Ask them to join you, wave, or send them a note. Start with hello. Hello. It's a small word with huge power. When we say hello, we help create a more connected and inclusive school and community. We will help build friendships and inspire others along the way. Say hello. It can make such a difference in someone's life. It will make them feel accepted, included, and valued. If we start with hello, we end with a friend.
And now it's your turn. We would like the audience members to participate in an activity we did during Start With Hello Week. Mix It Up Day was an opportunity for students who might not have gotten a chance to get to know each other yet, a way to break the ice. The students from our class will be passing out the same icebreaker cards to you now. We ask that you move. Find someone you don't know in the room, introduce yourself, and ask some of the questions on the cards. We will take just a few minutes now to let you try this activity with those around you, so go ahead and make a new friend.
Okay, everybody, if we could have our seats one last time, we're going to wrap this up for our students. I don't want to steal anyone's thunder here, but I am beaming with pride right now with our students and their hard work. I know Mrs. Larson would like to wrap it up, so I'll hand it off to Mrs. Larson for our conclusion.
I hope you enjoyed our little activity. The week was really full of student-driven activities. The greatest part about the whole week was that we provided them with some guidance and some of the ideas and logistically facilitated things, but this was the kids, every single part of it. From Say Hey Day on Monday, they were the ones out there greeting students and saying hello. On Mix It Up Day, they were the ones that helped initiate and remind others. Acts of kindness. The kids do these. They are given the opportunity and they always rise to the occasion. Pledge Day, we have our pledge banner where we had almost every single student in the school come by at one point and sign. So the idea is that it's not just the week. We want this to keep going the entire year. We won't do it to this extent every month or every week, but these acts of kindness, these easy things to do, simply just saying hello. Stop, notice someone, ask their name, look them in the face and say hello. And it goes such a long way. So again, I am so grateful to these guys over here because we put it together, but they're really the ones who ran with it. So again, I'm so super proud of you. We're really, really excited to get to share the opportunity with you and we hope you've enjoyed what we've shown you tonight. And we're just looking forward to a year and years to come of the kindness and just have it keeping going. It's a life skill. They're learning it now and it just will keep going with them forever and ever. So, thank you so much and thank you to you guys.
Stay for the meeting. It's a lot of fun. So, let me just say thank you to the students for taking this huge step towards making your school, your community, and by extension, the world a better place. I enjoyed the activity. For the parents, you must all be very proud. I know that as a Board of Education member, I'm very proud to have seen that. And I enjoyed getting to meet Wyatt and Chase. So, thank you very much. I don't know if anybody from the board wants to chime in, but this was great. Before you guys run out the back door, there's cookies in the back. Okay, we're going to continue with our meeting at this point. Yes, we are. Next up, we have committee reports. Jenna, you're on. Grab a microphone and pull it close.
So, as Alex reported last week with the Spirit Week was last week, so we had our annual Color Wars and sadly, the seniors won with Stranger Things and the juniors came in second with The Office. Then sophomores came in third with Lilo and Stitch and the freshmen did Carnival with Fourth. And also, the BHS/EECE/UCON drawing class participated in the Memory Project, which is a program that bridges the gap between American high school students and underprivileged children from around the world. And the students drew portraits from photos of 14 children from Afghanistan and shipped the drawings back to them. So it was pretty cool. And coming up on Sunday, the Niask visitors are coming to re-accredit the high school. And lastly, on November 3rd, it's Cabaret Night, so the BHS students will sing their favorite songs from their favorite Broadway musicals.
Excellent. Thank you, Jenna. Brian, do we have correspondence to the board?
No correspondence to the board this evening.
Okay. I have not received any correspondence either, so we will close the committee reports and move to audience of citizens. Is there anyone who would like to address the Board of Education this evening? Sir?
Hi, Jackie.
You can just stand and...
Okay. I was just curious where we stood with the Vestables meeting down here in town.
Can you state your name and address just for the record?
Sure. John Payton, 39th and Drive.
Brian, I'm going to let you answer this because I know you've met with the town, so...
Sure. The Vestables Project has been approved. The materials have been ordered. We're waiting for the extruded aluminum that will create the frame as well as the ballistically rated glass that'll be there. There's only three companies that produce this in the United States and there's a backlog. So our intent is to have them completed as soon as possible. We would be looking at trying to get one school completed prior to summer. It looks as though the others will probably be completed in the summertime. Otherwise, we would need alternative entries, but they're definitely taking place. The drawings have been done. Yes, they're definitely in place and we hope to have them in as soon as possible, but it looks like most likely it'll be summertime by the time... You're welcome. You're welcome.
Would anybody...
Hello. My name is John Markowski, 27th and 20th Brooklyn. Last meeting, I posed a question to the board and I was wondering if there was any fallout to it or if it just went dormant in that. There was... So the commander came up with the mechanicals for this school as far as HVAC system and I posed a question to the board to see if they would pursue getting a grant to get the equipment that would be the most advanced and then put the onus on the technical high school faculty in the area of regional technical high schools to install that as a learning program for those students and have the grant structured as such to utilize the equipment so we can get the latest and greatest and also take the opportunity to teach the students that are coming into the trades how to operate these new pieces of HVAC equipment, whether it's solar, electrical, whatever it is that the board or the town decides to go with. I was just wondering if anybody took that on and if they didn't, could add an explanation
I'm not sure I'm going to give you all of the answer that you're looking for, but I can tell you where we took it and where it stands. So, the Board of Education does not oversee the maintenance and so forth of our own buildings. That is done by the town. We simply... Maybe simply is the wrong word, but we put forth the requests to have items addressed through the budget process and then those items are, for lack of a better term, I guess, voted on by the Town Council Board of Finance to move those projects forward. Grants are those that we do research and try to find. Typically, grants have a very structured methodology of how we can proceed, but I know that Superintendent Benigni and I have had numerous conversations pursuing grants that would allow the improvement of our buildings. We bring them forward and then they go toward to town management, I guess is the best way for me to say that. So whether we can do exactly what you outlined in using another technical school to provide the labor and so forth, I don't know that at this point, but we have discussed it. And there was... I don't recall who it was, but somebody had a connection to the technical schools that night of the meeting because this meeting took place...
Was that what you mentioned, you had a connection?
No. She was, but... Because this meeting came forth when we presented the preliminary findings of the study. That's when we talked about it. It was apparent. Thank you. Carrie.
Is there somebody that I could talk to on the Finance Committee that might help you guys out, seeing that I'm a citizen of the town? That might make more onus from some of the town?
I mean, what I would suggest is that to find when the next Board of Finance meeting is, Finance Committee meeting is, and bring this exact same subject up. Brian, unless I'm mistaken, I think I've covered kind of where we fall in this.
I understand there's like a division and you guys aren't allowed to jump over the law, so to speak, to unfortunately make suggestions or whatever, but seeing that I'm not on your board, I can do that via proxy for you guys. Have you willing to do that because it makes sense to actually have somebody think outside the box here instead of being so regimented to it. It's traditionally been, this is the way we always done things.
Yeah, no, I would tell you that we really appreciated this suggestion. We've actually had some, you know, back room conversations, if you will, about this thing because it is outside the box. It's not the way we've traditionally done them, so...
I think the Finance Board would be a good place to start, but also Doug Solak, who's in charge of our building maintenance, he would be the right resource because he would know the different ramifications of having, you know, a third party such as a tech school working on the buildings, interacting with... He supervises all of the HVAC personnel.
Yeah, I'd be glad to give my contact information to you guys, so if you can have him reach out to me. You want me to give it to you?
Sure. If you don't mind giving it publicly, that's fine. If you want to write it down and give it to me, that's fine.
All right. But I would be glad to have him contact me and help him out with that.
Yeah, if you just want to write it down and leave it, we'll take it and we'll have him get in touch with you.
I appreciate that because I think I feel very strongly about this and that there's an opportunity here. If somebody doesn't take the ball and run with it, it's going to just fall and nothing's going to happen. So, I understand where you guys are coming from and I'm unaware that he even knows of this, so if he doesn't, I'll make him aware.
Thank you. David, if you don't mind, you could just give Mr. Kitzman your contact information and he'll get it to us. Thank you.
The next Board of Finance meeting, November 13th at 7:00 in the John Commander House Room.
It's...
It's in the town hall.
No, it's up in the town hall, around the corner, holds about eight people. So, Charles has been there a few times. Devin's been there a few times. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address Board of Education this evening? Seeing no one jumping up and down, I will close Audience of Citizens and we will move to item number five, the Consent Agenda. Anyone like to add, remove, or discuss items in the Consent Agenda? All right. Hearing none, I'll consider a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Motion by Julia. Second by Carrie. All in favor? Opposed? And we will move to new business. This is board discussion regarding security and safety. A little bit of background here. We held a public forum back in April, I believe. Is that correct? It was April? I believe it was April. To get an idea of our public safety, we've had one parent already come and talk to us about the Vestables. We appreciate that. That has been a thorn in my side at least because I feel like it's delayed and my expectation is that those Vestables were going to be done for the start of the school year, but there's been delays all along the way. We've had conversations regarding the creation and hiring of a safety coordinator for the entire district, someone that would interface with the police department, the fire department, all of the schools, would also oversee things like residency issues and presentations for students regarding safety and so forth. That would kind of all fall under this one umbrella. We have put a posting out for that. Superintendent has received numerous applications for that, so we're in that process. But we also had a conversation about school resource officers that the police department is providing to us and overall, school security for all of our buildings. The Board of Education feels that is a very... The Board of Education feels that is a very important issue that needs to be addressed. In our April forum, everybody was in agreement that that's where we should move, but there's been really no movement on the part of the town, the town government side, to help us move in that direction. We're going back and forth with certain issues. We had a joint meeting with the Board of Finance, the Town Council, and the Board of Education, probably two weeks ago now. The Town Council would like to see the security folks hired as retired police officers that would carry weapons in the schools, but they would fall under the direction of the Police Department, and the school administration would not have oversight to those security officers. And that leads us to a conversation today relative to the board, as to where we feel we fall regarding this. There are some concerns, at least from my position, to have the security officers fall under the Police Department, and one of that is, in the event that there's an officer shortage, they could be pulled from school security, as we are already seeing the potential with our SROs. Why would it stop with just having additional folks there? So that's a big concern of mine. But with that said, the floor is open for all board members to express their concern and... concern, their comments, my concern, their comments on where we would go. So Brian, I don't know if you want to give any more oversight into what I just talked about, but...
Sure, what I'm distributing to you is, we did a little study, a brief study of some surrounding towns, not necessarily by Derg, but surrounding towns that we would... that were questioned about what their current personnel looked like, given the student population and the school configurations. And if you look at the chart that's in front of you, those are strictly security within the buildings, and I can give you West Hartford's, that came in later tonight. We had a difficult time getting the numbers. But the SROs listed, if you look, just look at the SROs going into the lower portion. There's two SROs in Cromwell, there's three SROs in Farmington, there's two SROs in Glastonbury, there's one SRO in Newington, three SROs in Rocky Hill, one SRO in Southington, and West Hartford has placed three SROs. It's not there, but it's on the lower portion, three SROs. So currently, we have two SROs, one at McGee and one at the high school. The McGee SRO, due to the lack of police staff, is sometimes pulled as infrequently as possible, but that is something that does take place when needed. Other than that, we do not have other security personnel at this time. The reason for the chart is to really give you an idea of what other towns are doing compared to what we were thinking of moving forward with the Director of Security, as you stated, Matt. The only town listed here that provides armed security beyond the SROs, Glastonbury, and I'll provide with you another little article that came out in July 2018, and it speaks to... there's very few towns in the state that arm the security. Sorry, I need two more beside my... Region 10, which is Burlington, Harvington. The other district would be Region 9, which is made up of three towns, which is Redding, Glastonbury, North Bramford, and you can see them listed here in the, I think it's the fifth paragraph. Those are Glastonbury, Newtown, North Bramford, Region 9, and Region 10 just decided to arm. The other that was spoke of at the joint meeting between the three boards, that it was North Haven. In contacting, I contacted the majority of these towns and spoke with the superintendent or someone in central office. In Glastonbury, all are armed. They don't make a huge disclosure that they're armed, but it is in the article. In each town, it's very unique. In Region 9, because it's made up of three towns, some are funded by the town, the town that where the school resides, some are funded by the board, some are police officers, some are either former state troopers or police officers. So there's great differences amongst the town. When I spoke to Region 10, theirs are an SRO that's funded during the school year by the board, and then that officer works for the town during the remainder of the year. And that SRO acts as a supervisor of all of the retired police officers or state troopers that act as security. What's interesting also is a little background about, you know, a police officer by state statute are the only ones, former police officers in good standing, that can be in the schools and be armed. It cannot be any other personnel. So I also looked at a general statute here, 10-244A, and the reason I'm sharing this with you is, if we were to arm security, former police officers, the only training that they're mandated to have yearly is a gun safety course. But when speaking to Region 10, what I thought was interesting, and they've had this for a number of years, they actually make any of the retired officers who are hired as security contingent upon a psychiatric exam. A psychiatric exam is given upon being hired, and then given annually to be rehired, as well as the gun training. And this is something that they instituted there. I just bring that up to you, because I think there's more to it than just a state minimum of having someone take a gun course that the police chief has informed me is only a couple hours, and then saying, "You're safe to carry a firearm in a school, even if you are a former officer or a state trooper." So I guess the information I provide with you is trying to give you some information that goes beyond, you know, why would you arm, if we did have armed security, and who should be supervising them. I did not have any district that had all SROs. They were usually a mix of SROs and security within the schools.
Thank you, Brian. With that, I opened the discussion to all board members, keeping in mind that we are in the early stages of where we would go with this. We have determined that we feel that the coordinator's position is something that we should have and need. And then that conversation went to how we supplement the SROs we already have at the high school relative to security folks in all of the schools. If you think back to that forum, there was some healthy discussion about why is the high school and the middle school, where are those students, quote, and I'm just quoting here, "more important than my student that's in the elementary school"? And it's valid, in my opinion. That's my opinion. So with that, I open it up to the board to talk. I'm gonna be quiet.
So I have a question. I think it's important that we do have the Town Council supporting us as we move forward with this, and at that Thursday night meeting, I did hear their concern, both armed versus unarmed security. And I think just as a board moving forward, we want to make sure that, you know, we do have their backing, so this isn't something that will get cut with difficult budget terms. So I do have a question regarding if we hire a retired officer. So if we hire retired officers, I'm assuming they'll be hired at a lesser salary than a typical police officer. Do you think, what do you think the probability or likelihood would be that they would get pulled back to the Police Department if they're retired, and that's half a job that they're funding, because they're not going to become a police officer again, they're not leaving retirement?
I think the issue is that hiring retired police officers, they would not get pulled back to the force, so they would be our security. The issue that that poses is that the training and everything that a current police officer is required to do, this retired person would not. They'd be strictly security. So many of the training responsibilities, just as I said, that Region 10 does a psychiatric annually, as well as additional trainings, whoever is supervising would have to provide the necessary training to ensure that safe and secure, you know, position of that person, as well as the training with a firearm. In Region 10, the town actually provides the firearm to the officer, to the security personnel, and provides them with the training, as well as, as was stated, was the firing, the training at the firing range, as well as the training with safety, as well as the psychiatric, and any other training they think is needed for that security personnel.
So in Region 10, I don't know if in your discussion this came up, but what type of controversy did that cause in town? Did that come up in the region, I guess?
It wasn't that it was controversy, and because there was a joint commitment between the town and the board, it's been going on for a number of years, and according to the superintendent operates very well. But they do have, and that's where they have the SRO, who's in charge of security, who is an active police officer on the actual force. And that person works for the Board of Ed, is paid by the Board of Education, so much different model than we have now. Currently, our SROs, they're police officers on the force, and they report to the police chief. They work in the schools, but they are directed by the police chief. They're not directed by school personnel. So having security in the building with firearms, if they're under the direction of school personnel, is different than having an SRO, as they have in Region 10, who is directing all the security and oversight of the training and everything else that's required, based on them being an active police officer. They have more knowledge to all that than what we would have.
And more power also, am I correct? If they're actively employed by the Police Department as SROs, then they would have the power to do things that policemen have the power to do.
Right, well, I think, yeah, right. Well, the difference is, you know, an SRO can arrest, whereas a security would not be able to arrest, but a security personnel can intervene in activities happening, such as physical altercation, where the expectation of an SRO would not be to intervene physically at the school, unless there was going to be an arrest.
You know, I was not able to make it to the security forum, but a couple of questions come to mind. So if we're looking at security personnel for all the elementary, all the schools, including the elementaries, which I would appreciate, I've got a daughter in each of the schools, so I value them all equally. Is it assumed that the SRO at the high school and middle school would remain, and there would be new security in the elementary schools, or would be a brand-new program for all five schools?
I would very much like to see the SROs remain in the two schools, but I think the concern is, by the police chief, and he's expressed it to the town manager and to myself, is that there's a shortage of active police officers now. And because there's a shortage of training, and that once to hire an officer, it's a year before you have that officer online, that the concern is that he may need to pull the SRO from McGee at times. And until that shortage is shared up, we should, you know, the way it was phrased to me is, we should not rely on the SRO to be there all the time if he's short, because you will need to pull the person. So I guess the question you're asking to be more direct is, I think we would need a security personnel at McGee or at the high school, so if the SRO was pulled, we'd have the security go to that school, so there's always someone there. So at least one at the secondary.
Well, following some of the school shootings that took place, school resource officers were something that no one really knew about previous to the school shootings, right? And so there were federal funds in place to help towns get the SROs into the schools. And those grant funds usually lasted anywhere from, you know, one to three years, and then the funding ran out, and then the Police Department was left trying to fill these positions that no longer had a grant fund. So it's a long way of saying that the federal funding has dried up, and I think that you're gonna see more and more of the SROs being pulled out and working within the department on the road, for road jobs, whatever else. I personally would be in favor of, and I've talked to some people already, and we actually have, we actually, we have a lot of police officers that live in Burlington, and you'd be surprised how many would love to work in the town or work for the Board of Education as well. I always envisioned that if you have, say, we'll use a state trooper as an example, that has, you know, health benefits through the state, it might not need those benefits through the town, you know, there's certainly some savings there, and I would imagine that would be very attractive, especially if they have a family, to be able to work school hours and the school year while having the summer off. And if they're under the jurisdiction of the superintendent and the Board of Education, it would make the most sense, because the security's gonna be at your direction, what the priorities are within the schools, what the events are happening, and I think that the Board of Ed, and namely the superintendent, is gonna have a better idea of what the priorities are than somebody on the town side. So that being said, I think that there are enough people... a lot of these people are retiring after 20 years. They'd be in their early 40s and looking for the next career, and I think that there would be ample opportunity for people to take a job within the school system. But that being said, if it was part of the Board of Education budget, I don't think that anybody would be willing to play with it to say that if there's a tight budget year that you're gonna cut security. I just, I would never see that happening to begin with, and if anyone would even, you know, throw that out there as being an opportunity, I really would never see that ever occurring. But I do believe in the consistency of having full-time during the school year, security under the direction of the Board of Education, namely the superintendent.
I agree with that on the idea that the supervisory relationship should be the Board of Education as opposed to the Police Department. I'm personally not in favor of armed guards, but I like the idea of school security at every building. I don't have a problem with that. If you want to arm them, and you want to have Police Department control, that's an SRO, to me. You've got it, you've got it. If you want that, then commit the manpower necessary. If you don't, then allow us to manage our own personnel and trust the judgment of the Board of Ed and what Mr. Benigni need to decide what the role of these people and the expectations is going to be in the oversight of them. I think, frankly, I don't understand what the Police Department's role would be in overseeing these people as just security guards in the schools. The question falls to the education experts.
I have a question, just to ask, I'll look with Adam. Adam, I agree with what you said, and I think that you make a lot of sense saying that retired officers who live in town, who already have benefits, might really like working the school hours in the school year. When you were talking about that, were you referring to them as armed or unarmed, or you're just not sure yet?
You know, I will say this. This is my own personal opinion. If the board is going to say they're gonna be armed guards, then my feeling would be they have to be retired police officers, period. I would not be in favor...
They have to by statute.
Okay. That being said, you know, that's a discussion. To me, there's two ways of being armed. There's concealed and non-concealed. And, you know, around children in elementary school, I don't take a gun on somebody's hip is something that the students need to see. I would defer to the people that have many more years in education, Mr. Kitzman and others. But the arms, honestly, it doesn't bother me one way or the other. I'd be more curious to hear how parents and other administrators feel. Right now, we have armed security in schools. I mean, we have it now, the SROs. So if they are retired officers that are still carrying a weapon, you know, that's, you know, a discussion I'd be happy to have, but I can't say that I've certainly made up my mind.
That's fair, thank you.
I think it's just important to think that if we were to arm security in the schools, that there should be specific training regimens beyond what the statute states of just, you know, the ability of safety for a gun, and that's why I brought up Region 10 and the psychiatric exam that's given annually, and there's other trainings that they do about, you know, interactions with a building and that role and so on, that are requirements. Because just because you've been a police officer, to now be into a building and to have that role, which is really, you know, as much as it's safety and security, it's the relationships that they build. You think about many of the incidents that have occurred across the United States and beyond have been from the inside out, right? Students that have been here, and it's the relationships that these people build, and there's a lot of research out there that states that adults that have relationships with students in a non-evaluative way, meaning that it's not a teacher, it's not someone who grades them, it's that adult. And, you know, for example, as our high school, we have our retired SRO, Paul Germaine, as an in-school suspension supervisor. He's out in the hallway every period, just talking to students. Now, he's not the SRO any longer, he's in-school suspension, but he has relationships with the students and knows just by how they fist bump or what they say to him, what kind of mood they're in, or where those fragile students are, potentially fragile students are, as well as the SRO. And I would say at the high school currently, just having an SRO, not having a security person... school currently, just having an SRO, not having a security person, you know, our new principal has said that, coming from West Hartford, there were an SRO, and there were four security people in the high school at Conner, where at our high school, we have one SRO. And so, much different as far as the structure of the building. So it's, I, I don't think you think of security just as having a gun, that that makes you secure. It's the inside-out piece, the relationship piece. I think that's important, that these individuals have with the students and the staff.
You know, just, I'm sorry, just to say one more thing. I think the debate of armed or unarmed is also going to follow what's going to happen. Are these going to be security personnel under the direction of the Board of Education, or are they gonna, or is it going to be a combination of SROs and security? I think, once you kind of determine what the employment is going to look like, I think that the, the armed or unarmed, you know, discussion kind of follows that as well.
Just to piggyback on what you were saying, Brian, I think that, in my experience of SROs, or anyone occupying a similar position, the relationships are key to that. So whether or not you're carrying a firearm is really irrelevant, if you have a strong relationship and can read kids and adults. And to that point, the training is really about, for me, whether the person is a police officer, a police officer, or a person otherwise employed by the board, is really about more than, you know, weapon safety and so forth, but really about understanding school culture, and understanding relationships, and being able to operate in that environment, because it doesn't always translate from traditional training to a school environment. So I would ask, I would ask that, have us sort of ponder the question of what would be involved in training an individual, number one, like what we would look for in that. And that's not a question we have to answer tonight. But also, in my experience of SROs, who are obviously of a police force, they tend to rotate on a certain basis, so they'll have like a three-year stint, in my experience. I don't know if that's still the case, but when I worked in a high school, that was generally how they worked.
It depends. Our high school SRO has been at it for several years, does an outstanding job. And I think that the police chief agrees with that, and the administration, as well as the teachers, maintains it.
Okay, that's good.
And McGee, well, we've had, I think, two over the years.
Okay.
So it, it's more consistent, I think, than in most of the districts.
Okay, that's good to know.
You mentioned the idea, the difference between the SRO and the security guard, that the SRO wouldn't get involved in a student conflict or a fight unless an arrest was imminent or at least suspected. That means a security guard would. The assumption would be that they might go in to break up a fight. I don't know that I'm comfortable with an armed guard going in to break up a fight between two teenage boys.
And those are all things, if you were to have an armed security guard, we would have to think about, you know, as well as, you know, potential of carrying a firearm and doing that, you know, what, you know, whether it's a sidearm, or it's concealed, and so on. There's, there's a lot of ifs, ifs, ifs to think about in doing that. You know, obviously, as I said, I've spoke to three, three of the districts that were listed here, on how they handle things. So that could give greater insight to the board.
I think Adam also made a really valid point about getting community input and administration input before, you know, as the board continues this discussion. I think, you know, it may not be the definitive decision, but it's really important to consider and see what people in the community think and feel, and hear what they have to say.
What I would suggest is that we create a survey to go to all parents in the district, and also all of our staff. They're just as impacted by this as the students. And we look at the results of what that survey would be. And I think it really pertains, not whether or not we have the people in the building, but whether or not they're armed or not armed, I think is the important question. The other thing is, is we can continue to have discussions on this, but in the end, our discussions are not making our schools more secure at this point. So I am voicing my, my position of, I think that we need to work on this seriously and quickly to determine what we're going to do. We are entering the budget year for next year, and while this, to me, this is not a budget issue, this is a safety issue, and the two are, are definitely different. I don't think there is, there is any way you can justify student safety being tied to a budget in any way. We need to decide, as a board, what we want to do with the input of the community, and then we need to implement that practice. So I would recommend that we get a survey out to folks as soon as possible to get results. And again, it should be all parents, from kindergarten, all the way through to this year's senior class, to get that input. And it should go to all of our staff. And where's Jenna? Jenna, I don't want to put you on the spot, but as a high school student, just your own personal opinion on whether or not we have safety officers that have a gun with them, don't have a gun with them, do you feel safe in school? That, that kind of question. I told you I'd put you on the spot when you signed on.
I personally, right now, I feel safe in school, but with armed officers, I think that's, would be a little different, but I don't know. Yeah. Sorry, that wasn't that specific.
No. Mr. Cugno, can you shed any light on the opportunity for grants, or what other districts are doing relative to school security, SROs, security officers, right? I know that, still pulling stuff underneath your belt here, but I know that this is probably a pretty hot topic in the, in the central office.
Well, generally, you know, the, the discussion of security is, is a big issue everywhere, as I, as, see, there's other things to consider for security than just the security officers. I understand that the board is speaking about that, and I'm sure there'd be a continuing discussion relative to how we man our, or woman, our, our, our schools with security officers, armed or not. And assuming for the moment that that's not going to be resolved at this meeting, there are a couple of other things I'd like to mention to the board relative to security for our schools that we are working on. I'm sure you all know that we have a, a new system, a Raptor system, that is, makes sure that we know who the people are coming to visit, that they have badges, that they have pictures, that we know how long they're going to be there, if they're going to be volunteers, the background checks on our volunteers, and things that are very, very directly related to security of our children in those schools, and our teachers. On top of that, what a lot of the communities are doing, and what our, even our security, we had a safety report, the board had a safety report done a few years ago, on the kind of things that would be suggested and recommended for our Berlin schools. And we are going forward with a lot of that. Most of it was not circled around whether you had security in the schools or not, the people, you know, actual armed, armed or not, although that was obviously suggested in cases. But a lot of it was cameras. We are going forward, supporting, and I know the board will be supporting, getting tremendously more cameras in our schools, so we know what's happening at all levels. And we have main offices in the schools, and probably, probably, if it's done, in my estimation correctly, connected to the police department, fire department, with the screens that show where, where everybody is, what's going on, and be able to retract those screens, to find out what incidents go on, from a standpoint of security or safety in, in the school, and also if there's anything, anything happening in the schools. There's also simple things that, you know, you don't think of, but the right kind of locking systems on the doors, the right kind of entrances in the doors, and a number of those items of technology that are very, very important to school security, no matter if you have armed guards or not. Okay? So I, I guess the best I can say is there are grants available for that. Very frankly, we already have approximately $50,000 in money that is left over from not being spent, but just reallocated, that we can do for cameras right now at McGee, and we hope to do that this year, put those cameras in place. We also have had been, the town have been successful in getting some grants. You know, there, again, it's a big thing nationwide in this, and if you talk about Homeland Security, by the way, I thought it was interesting to, to see what the actual name of Homeland Security is. So I'm going to read this out here. It's Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. That's what that really is. So when we all talk about it, it's got a lot of things that, they are offering, this is a school security competitive grant program. The town of Berlin has been involved in this in a couple of years, and we have been very supportive of that from the staff of, of the Board of Ed. Did a little research on what we've got and what we could get. We have had one earlier grant, under Homeland Security, which has been, we also have the vestibule grant that is going on right now in our school. So we've been successful in putting in, actually, some structures in our facility that will hopefully be operating in the next few months. This is an important security issue. We also have a security grant round three that was approved last February for Berlin. And it was approved for three schools. I'll just give you, give you a moment. It was approved for Berlin High School for some particular things. One of them was, let's see, I do have it written down here. Hold on one second. It is a fire and police, here we go, police and fire responder system at Berlin High School, which, by the way, has already, has already been contracted for by the town, and is, part of it is in, the fire part is in, and the, the second part is being put in right now. So out of a grant that we received, or at least a program we received, is, is the town and the Board of Ed, which is a little over $700,000 last February, the town has contracted for, at this point, about $200,000 of that. We have a lot more money to spend. One of the tricks of these things is it's a, it's a matching grant. So, for example, on this 700 and some odd dollar grant, which I can give you the exact amounts, Mr. President, if you'd like, but in that, in, there is a 60, pardon me, 58% of it that's paid by the state of Connecticut, Connecticut, and 41% of it that's paid by the town. So we have to match this money. So in order to go forward to get the rest of this grant completed, and the kind of things that are noted in the grant that they'd like to have done in Berlin High School, oh, I finally realized why I can't see what I'm doing. Excuse me for a minute. Tough to get hold. Let's see, Berlin High School, you've got window work that has to be done, ballistic glass and window film, penetration-resistant vestibules. It's, it's an additional thing to what we have that now. And also this real-time interoperable communications, which is, which is the police and fire thing I was speaking about. We also have at Hubbard, cameras, doors, locks, multimedia sharing, infrastructure, and real-time operable communications, and the same thing at Willard. Unfortunately, McGee did not get under this round of grant. But so we're hoping on a couple of things. We're going to go in and apply for round four, which will get some more money, money, I believe. That application is, is due in December, and you have to spend this money up through 2021, I guess. And so we hope to apply for another grant and get it. And we also hope to work with the town to be able to get these, this match put in place, to be able to go out and use the rest of the money. Okay? Because we don't necessarily have, Board of Ed doesn't necessarily have the match to put up. It's the town that would normally put up the match. So, and they're looking at budgeting that now, in this year or going forward. They have until 200, 2020, to get us the grant in order for us to complete these things. So there's a number of things going on with security, that my personal opinion is, and I would always recommend that we push forward with, you know, as quickly as we can, because these things are certainly as important in protection and safety of our, of our, our students as the guards.
Thanks, Jeff. I'm assuming-
Yep.
-that when you talk with the town, that that's the, the town manager, and also the Board of Finance are aware of the, the grants and the process.
Oh, yeah. They, they've, in every meeting I've been in, they've been very supportive. It's just, again, a lot of these things, they come down to budget.
Right.
In other words, you've got to have the money to match. You know, the state can come out and go, you know, we'd like to have you spend $700,000, and then the community has to go, we've got to have, come up with a match for the money. So.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman, can I just make a comment? Because I, I find this very odd. We're all sitting here as a Board of Education, and now it's become normal to talk about ballistic glass, cameras, armed guards. This is sad, okay? We should be talking about education in classrooms, and what's going on in teaching, and what, how we're improving the lives of our students. And now we're talking about protecting them as if we're building prisons. But it's, it's really unfortunate. And I just, you know, just an observation. Very sad.
Agree 100% adamant, and, you know, in my, my life outside of Berlin Boards of Education, I, I see a lot of school districts, and it's interesting, is all districts are having the same conversation.
The conversation, I don't know, about mental health.
Correct. Anything else on this subject at this point? So, a few actions. Mr. Cugno, keep working on those with the board, with the, with the grants and moving them forward. Thank you for your efforts there.
Brian, I think we need to get a survey out as soon as, as possible. So we'll need to work on the structure of that survey, and the appropriate questions to ask. Obviously, if you make it a 20-page survey, you get a very poor response. We want to keep it as simple as possible, but still give us the feedback that we're looking for. Any other suggestions on, on actions moving forward?
I was going to say, the survey, do you want it to come out of Brian's office, or should it just come from the communications?
I mean, technically, it should come out of the communications subcommittee. They should be working actually with Brian's office to develop that survey, and move it forward from there. Jake is not here this evening, so we'll make sure we get the message to him. But we have our other members, Tracy and Adam are both here, so we'll know where we move from there. Brian?
So I'll draft some questions, and then I'll send them to Tracy and Adam and Jake. And then if you're good with them, we can get that out by the end of the week, or on Monday next week. Because that's reasonable.
Just for clarification, is it the same survey for parents, as well as teachers, administrators? Or are they different?
I think we'd ask the same questions, and that we have discerned them into two different groups, right? So we'd break it up and have an elementary, a middle school, and a high school, and then a staff. And we can break the staff up, elementary, middle, high school too, or look at it as a, as a whole, you know, so we can, we can look at it different ways.
All right. Before we adjourn, there are two reminders. The first is NIASC arrives this coming weekend. In your packet, you received a, a bunch of questions. On Sunday, starting at 2:15, will be NIASCs interviewed with the Board of Education. So if the question is, do we need to be there? The yes is, it's greatly appreciated if you were there. I also know that, that this is a Sunday. It is a weekend. Unfortunately, that's how they run the, NIASC certifications. So, starts at the high school at 2:15. You have, it's a pink piece of paper, these are questions that may be asked of you as a board member.
Do you know where it is?
I mean, do you do that in front of somebody?
Yeah. I saw that it's classrooms, classroom offices to the left of the auditorium is what I saw. It's in the update that Debbie sent out on Friday.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And number two, is this is our final public meeting of this particular board. We have three members up for reelection. So to Julia and Tracy and Adam, we wish you all the luck in the election, because we do not have another public meeting between now and Election Day. So we wish you well, and hope that at the next meeting, you are sitting in exactly the same places that you are sitting in now. So we wish you the best of luck with that. Is there anything that the board would like, anybody, members of the board like to make comment, or if not, I'll adjourn a motion?
Mr. Stewart?
Second.
The quickest motion and second there is out there. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, and we are adjourned. 8:26.